Do you want me to go on to the subject week?
Yeah.
Okay, so under special meaning today, we have subject week consideration of meeting date change for regular city council meeting on December 10th, 2019. Discuss and consider for possible action change in the day for the regular city council meetings scheduled for December 10th, 2019, this is the Tuesday. Do you want to have a discussion first?
Yeah, I think it's important for everybody to get their...
And do you have any minutes? Do you have a few minutes to discuss?
Well, really, several people spoke up, just called and said, "Why did you guys put this on the same night as Grass Valley?" That was what I got.
Can't be right, okay.
You guys are trying to share your...
I'm just trying to sleep, that's all I'm saying, sorry. There's no more to ask, all right, guys?
So, several people have asked us to move it from Tuesday to 10th simply to Thursday to 12th, so it's not sticking on Grass Valley for many reasons. NCTV was one of them, they can't cover both meetings simultaneously, it's hard. So, our media outlet said the same thing, they don't have one reporter to cover both meetings, they want to be able to have Tuesday, Thursday, so we're simply trying to do this. We moved it to keep it off until Christmas, so people could attend on Wednesday. So, we're simply trying to take it off until Tuesday, off of Grass Valley tonight, and move it to Thursday, the night after the current Christmas. That's all we're doing. So, it's not the same time. Several people said they wanted to attend Grass Valley meetings for whatever reason, and they can't attend both too, so the public felt that we were keeping them, remaining to speak at both meetings for whatever their personal reasons. So, that was my input. Other people have had different input.
Erin, do you have any input on that? Lowery, do you have any input? Wait, do you have any input? I guess the only thing that I would have is I did speak to Sherri Duke about recording for NCTV. She did say they don't have a difficulty recording both nights at the same time. One will be Channel 17, one will be Channel 18, and they do have staff to cover it, so that's probably... Sherri, open the public comment. Okay, open the public comment if you can speak loudly, and I...
Keep it there.
Yeah, and if you just keep it to a minute, because we're... If you just keep it to a minute, because everyone's gonna leave shortly, is that okay? Or you guys don't want to stay on the point? Okay, so...
Just another comment, I just wanna know, past December 10th meeting been publicized?
Yes, it has.
And how broadly has it been publicized?
How widely?
Broadly, widely, yes. Like in the newspaper?
Well, I think the staff's last city council meeting was gonna be moved, my own whether it was even that or beyond that.
But we aren't... So, it's been on this day for about a month now?
It's been on this day for about a good two weeks, I'd say, two, three weeks, yeah.
Seems to me that my comment...
Okay, wait, can you come up and give us your name and address, and then you speak? You've got a minute, let's make it official, please. Thank you.
Lorraine Wright, I've had City Council in thirty years, one five three point out the extension, and I'm the writer of the quarter. I think that most of the public, my perception of it going up a lot, is that people already think it's the 10th. And so, for you to change it now to the 12th might be detrimental to the public who want to be there, and who have planned to be there, who've set their calendars accordingly, to be there. So, I'm just saying, if there's not a good reason to change it, then why do it?
Thank you. Next. Name and address, please.
Polly Hall said 423 South Hines Street. Well, now that the motion has been brought forward, and you all seconded it, and just sat there and did nothing, and it got scheduled, my personal feeling is, let's roll with it, let's get it done. Because the community, you know, has a lot of feelings about this, and you need to hear it.
Any one else? Speak on the side. Name and address, please.
MJ Greenhouse, 1289 East Lake Creek Road. The pop link, from my very limited but objective perspective about what's coming up, is that it's very important, and it's urgent, and many people have set other things aside to prepare their schedule, to be able to attend that particular meeting. If there is no actual factual reason to change the meeting, it shouldn't be changed. And I really appreciate everybody sticking with what is, because otherwise you're dissipating the energy, and you're basically causing a lot of people in the public not to be able to attend, and that's not appropriate.
Anybody else on the seats and status?
Jack L. Jackson, 12 going away in Nevada City. I just wanna say again what he said. I mean, in my case, I had a whole event planned at my house, and we had, and I changed it to be able to attend the meeting. And so, changing it after plans have already been made, adjusting to the meeting that was announced, it just made it a big deal, so, just wanted to bring this back here.
Anybody else?
Matthew Wolf in Nevada City, yes, access to the meeting, it's available information. It's not just you guys, it's the family also, it's the cities. And if you're just blocking the people out of the process, so it causes a lot of frustration, I think that people are among yourselves too, because I think the more involvement you get from the people, the more dispersion will be from these things. Not be piled on you guys, and you guys are all involved.
Jeffrey Gossman, for us on Red Budway, Nevada City. I find, I'm personally offended by what, you know, I can't know for sure, but this whole idea of scheduling this workshop on short notice, and then changing the meeting date, just feels to me like a way to not have to deal with the very legitimate concerns of the majority of people who've spoken out on the issue in previous council meetings. And I think that the mayor should be praised and not impugned for her attempts to get to the facts and deal with an issue that could be a health concern for us, for the rest of our lives and our kids' lives.
Any comments?
Well, I'd like to comment about the training.
We never opened that, we haven't really opened that, that's what I'm talking about.
No, they can't, but they can call it out, but I think we need to...
Okay, so we do this, let's, we're gonna have to go. So, we need to vote on this, and then afterwards, can we have some public comment?
Maybe have something else that matters.
Okay, so, we've got to do this, so should we have a vote on the December 10th date? Do we want to have a motion, a discussion?
Is it in or...
Motion is that we...
Yes, be a motion, what's the motion and then a vote?
Oh, motion, move to the 12th, and then we'll discuss that.
Okay, so you have a motion to move to the 12th. You have a second.
One second.
One second. Okay, so we don't have a second, okay.
So, and I, so the majority of people that I saw responded, said that they felt offended that we put it on the 10th, on the same night as Grass Valley. So, I'm just trying to be straightforward, the reason we brought it up to try to... To try to move to the 12th was because most people said we thought we had done that on purpose, to keep people from attending both meetings, and that was not the intention. And this was scheduled way back, simply because of the current Christmas, or any of the 5G topics, other topics came up. That's why I brought it up, move it to the 12th, because we've had a lot of people say, "Why did you put it on the same night as the 10th at Grass Valley?" They felt we did it on purpose, that was not the case. That's why I asked us to move to the 12th.
Thanks, thanks for that. Okay, so, no motion, we're done with that topic.
Just so we're clear, the motion was made and died for a lack of a second, so it stays on the 10th.
Correct, thanks, Tom. Okay, so, and then, no way you have to go. We'll now open public comment on the facilitation we just had, is that correct? Are we giving that? That's right? And do I have to do this? We have to do both? Yes.
We also clarify, though, just so there's no misunderstanding, on December 10th, most likely 5G, I bet, put together, were working on the changes, but that's not going to be on the December 10th topic, so don't let anybody misunderstanding that. You're not, you know, if you show up at the 10th, it's gonna be other topics, but not 5G, so just be aware of that, so you're not misled, or you don't show up to fill the slide. We were working hard on it, the changes are being made on paper to go to returns, as we promised, but there was no way physically we could do it by the 10th, so, just so you know that.
Thanks, all right. All right, so, public comment regarding...
Okay, so, I'm gonna stand here so that the public can hear the comments. Lorraine Wright, I was anxious to hear this training, because I'm also wanting to know how one comports themselves as a representative of the city, or a governing body, and as a person with, in America, upholding the Constitution and having free speech, First Amendment rights. So, we have an interesting world now, we have the digital age. When you have, for instance, and I'm talking completely out of my own consideration here, my own thinking, is that if you have a Facebook page, for instance, your personal Facebook page, and you express your views, is that in violation if you happen to be a city, you know, a governing council person, or another position in government? Is that not allowed, to have your personal Facebook page expressing your personal views?
I came, I actually went to a lead training in Nashville, and I attended the social media class, and the best advice that an attorney there gave was, you should have a separate social media page that is personal, from your political or council view. They should be separate, because really, that all should be going on with your council page, would be city business.
Right, so does the council have a city page for pages?
The city doesn't, Tom.
The city does.
Light and honor, that's what you know.
Okay, the second comment that I'd like to make is that you gave an example of that all appointed positions are, take an oath to uphold the Constitution, and that you described how city, members of the city council are too expected to act, and I'm confused because I believe you said that when the city council makes a decision, that the majority decision, that the council members, even though they may have a differing personal opinion, are expected to represent the council's majority position. Now, if that were the case at all levels of government, then you'd have the Supreme Court, for instance, which ultimately is by majority, and you have very strong, you know, believing thinkers there, you've got the majority view, and then you've got the minority view. Certainly, you wouldn't expect Ruth Ginsburg to representing the majority view, just because the majority of the Supreme Court held that view. Now, I think that must be the same for all levels of government. And I'd like you to clarify that more.
Okay, so...
So, my question is, is it true that an individual city council person must represent the view of the majority, if there has been action taken on a...
I'm not sure what you mean by must represent.
Well, you gave the example of a person going to a congressman, a congressperson, and having a discussion, and you said that in that context, the individual would be expected to represent the view of the decision of the governing body they represent. Okay.
Represent, or share, right? So, in the examples I read, the person, the retrograde person, the court winning person, said, "I want to share with you what the position of the city is. Here's the position of the city, and if it felt that was useful, I will share with you my position which differs."
Good, okay, I didn't manage to say that. So, it's always permissible for an individual to say, "This is my view, my personal view, not the view of the council," because the council has made a decision, and it's a different opinion.
So, I would tell you, one of the things to consider that I also was, the impact it would have on the rest of the governance team, though, by me doing that. So, I'm checking it right here, here's what I made, a specific example, Southern California, a council member went to their congressional person, shared the view of the city, and then shared with the congressional member, "Here's my view which differs," right, as a 4-1 vote against you. And then the congressional person took the dissenting vote and represented it to the world as the city's position.
Well, that was his mistake.
Yeah, yeah, so, there's the risk, right, that we run, and so we ask ourselves, if we're gonna share, why are we sharing? Do I need to, is it gonna have an impact? Is it just me wanting to do it? Me assuage my own pride? We have to always weigh that, with what's in the best interest of Nevada City, and how it's going to impact Nevada City. That's my counsel.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, Lo Han Char speaking, name and...
Mr. R. R. I. 620 Zion Street, and I want to thank you, you have a great presentation. I'm glad that I managed to get dressed and down here in time to sit.
Okay, thanks, yes.
My name is Aitara O'Connell, I'm resident at Grass Valley. And I would say, you know, as far as the agenda is concerned, that it would have been polite to go ahead and have the vote, you know, before the training, so that, you know, 25 members of the public, or whatever, didn't have to sit through a training if they didn't want to sit through the training. Fortunately, it was an interesting speaker, but I would also say about the training, it would have been cool to have some time spent on conflict resolution, which seems to be the last several times I've been to the council meeting, there's conflict within the group, and have some kind of strategy for how we can resolve conflict. Yes, it's pretty basic, that everybody has different opinions, that's great. So, what do we do when we have differing opinions, and both people believe that they're acting in the best interest of the community? How can we resolve these issues? And that, to me, seems to be the issue, rather than, you know, picking out one person who's spending too much time on their opinion, rather than just working out a conflict at the time of the council, or later. This is too weird right now for us to be arguing with each other, we'll come back and deal with this after we have some conflict resolution, something like that, rather than spending time talking about how we all have different opinions. Like, who doesn't know that? That's just like basic. So, anyway, thanks.
I appreciate your comment on the agenda, I just want to point out, the second item came into play after this training was already set, and actually today was only specific to this training. That last item, it got to be visited during a period of time where it still gets posted on this agenda. If they wanted to take action, it would have had to have been today to change it, in a timely manner, to move the meeting if they were all in agreement. So, that was definitely, there was a reposted agenda with that item, and that's why it was second, because the dairy is already, it gets to be up here at 8:30.
And also looks in the pink box. And why don't I ask?
Polly, do you have a comment?
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. So, with the conflict resolution side, I had interviews with each council member, including our mayor vice chair, and René could point out, we spent about an hour on the phone, and we talked about, you know, how we deal with some of those challenges. And with the variant paradigms that differ, I look at my fellow council member, hear what she said after she heard what I said, kind of a response to me, so I appreciate you sharing your position on that, right? And you disagree, you just move on, but I don't, we don't take issue with you or judge you now unworthy, because you're wrong, kind of thing. We just say, "Okay, I appreciate your opinion, your opinion," but we move forward, but we all get to have that voice and be processed, but we move forward.
And so, who's the leader of the team, the mayor?
The mayor's in charge of the meeting. The mayor's in charge of the meeting.
Yeah, so the mayor's still going on.
To a certain extent, yes, I mean, yeah, there's been a motion, or a second, or some steps. Okay, any other remarks? Oh, Polly, I'm sorry, Polly.
Okay, so, one thing that did not get addressed was that when a city council meeting is happening, and the city council members are stating something like, there would have been complaints coming in, that they are speaking the truth. Because in one instance, Duane said there were complaints about Striker House, there were none, no written complaints coming into the city. And the other night, Erin said during her little spiel, that there were complaints. There was one written email complaint that came in 24 hours prior to that meeting, conveniently, and then Erin took that complaint without giving it to the rest of the city council. She forwarded that complaint to the city manager and the city attorney, who sat on that complaint and did nothing, and then the ball started to roll.
It went from the... Was this a comment, is this a comment about the training? Because you're only supposed to be commenting on the training itself.
I am, okay. So, this did not get included in the training, it's the honesty that has to happen when city council members state something in public to the community, it has to be the truth.
How about they have to disclose, how about...
And it has to disclose.
Because I have a question, so everything has to be disclosed. So, that's a question, so what do you do? What do others need to do? And they say, "We have correspondence," so I've been told, some of it's hearsay. One thing is, if there's a comment going on, I want to see it on public record, sent to the city manager, shared with the council members, because there's a lot of hearsay. So, what do others need to do in this case?
Yeah. I think part of it has to do with written complaints versus verbal complaints, which all council members get verbal complaints. I tend to get the written complaints unless they go directly to a council member, but I get the verbal complaints as well. I don't document all the verbal complaints, I generally try to manage them as they go forward. So, I think that there's been a real strike as far as verbal versus written complaints received.
So, is this something where, when you get a verbal complaint, is it not best to just say, "No, I hear you," or what would be best is for you to write that, email it, just to the manager, is that the best process, so that we can all be on the same page?
Well, I don't know if there is a single best process, but what we want for our governance team is for us to have all of the information available to us to make an informed decision. If, in fact, there have been complaints, if, in fact, they're written, or verbal, whatever it is, give us the nature of it, let us know the time to process it, and not just be reacting to it off the cuff in the middle of a meeting, right? So, the key is, have we provided our council members with all of the information that is gonna be needed to make an informed decision on what we're doing? That's the key. So, however that happens, whatever medium, depends on the situation. One of the members of the public may complain to a council member, and then they say, "Hey, you put that in writing, and I'm not interested, but I'm just letting you know," right? They may say that, right? And then that's their prerogative. It's a democracy here, right? We can't force you to put that in writing entirely.
Wait, let's make sure the other folks have not spoken yet. Yes? Yes, or just wherever you are, just sign name and address.
I'm a city-less, unincorporated Grass Valley person. And thank you for the opportunity to listen in on this training. One thing, and I admit, I come from a background of dealing with things in consensus method. One thing that I was wondering, even in the definition of the leader, leadership, where do the people come in? Aren't the leaders supposed to listen to the people? Aren't the people supposed to give the direction? That was the thing, that's all I got to say.
Okay, I missed the first one. Lorraine, up around... Were you here at the very beginning of the panel? Were you here at that moment, on the slide?
I missed the first one.
Okay, there was, there was actually specifically to that, so, and that would be on the slide along...
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so you guys, if anybody has not made a comment, actually, those reasons would be done now. Anybody that has not made a comment, yes?
Yeah, my name is Migos Faberson, I live in 508 Goodby Way, Nevada City. I had a response to the direction of Mr. Graciello, what's his name? He indicated that a representative of a governing body can make a statement about their own particular position, which may be in variance with the majority decision. And I think the ambition was to make it clear that you're speaking for yourself, but you also said that you need to consider the context toward the greater good, and essentially, maybe well, or kind of subjugate what you might otherwise say because of what you're calling the greater good. I think it's up to individuals to decide what they think is the greater good. If I'm a representative of a body of people, and I feel I have a voice that's pending very strongly, even though I may be in the minority of the vote that might have been taken, I still feel it's my obligation to speak up and state what that is. That is the best interest of the community. And the second thing is, and it kind of goes back to what Lorraine mentioned about the court, the Supreme Court, that minority opinions are very important, that they, a majority opinion comes out, and people have a dissenting point of view, it is clearly within the public interest that that dissenting point of view be heard. And I think some civil rights actions have been important to state in that regard, whether it was Blessing versus Ferguson years ago, which was an abominable decision, if there hadn't been some subsequent follow-up and speaking in opposition to that, we probably wouldn't have addressed it much further. So, anyway, my point is, I think, you know, yes, consider the greater good, but I think people can have different opinions about what that is, and they should have the right to live in order to...
I agree.
Yes. Joy Braden, 1289 East Lake Creek Road, Nevada City. Thank you for the meeting, and the information, and the discussion. And I too am concerned about attending these meetings on a very controversial issue that does require different points of view really coming to terms with it, and to include the public in that, as well as seeing on record, which can be verified, the latest line of council members about the topics being discussed, and how is that handled? Is there censuring around that? When, you know, when even, we even saw it in this meeting with the council members that left the meeting, where, "Oh, no, the public wants this, and the people can't attend because they can't, or they can't video," whatever, the videotaping thing. And that was not true. And whether or not that was a lie, we can't say, but what it does to the public trust in people who are entrusted with the well-being of the community is what is at issue here. And that's what concerns me.
Thank you. Okay, guys, we only do one comment at a time, if you've not spoken, that's a public comment, and you're not going to adhere to that same rule. If you have not spoken, please put your hand up. Baby?
Thank you, so welcome to 220 Jordan Street, Nevada City. I too am extremely concerned that two important council people left. Your presentation was really valuable. I personally feel that the discussion we're having right now is the most important part of this meeting, and that two people who are pivotal to this whole situation are not here. I would love it if Eric, who showed up here, just wanted to do the videotape, if they watched this videotape, it's important that Councilwoman Manette and Councilmember Strauss are here what we are saying now, because they're not here. And we have showed up to be part of this, because there's a real illness right now in our community, and it's gonna get worse unless we take care of it. That's why we're here, that's why we want to see how the city council is going to work to cure this. But if two people aren't here to hear what we're saying, can you make sure that they watch the entire tape? Can you do that, Trina? I think it's important...
If I ask them, I can't do it.
Well, no, you can't with their feelings meant, but what we're talking about right now is representation, for myself anyway, I want to hear what they're gonna say in response. That's why I came. I wanted to hear how the situation is going to be dealt with. So, I would like, Erin, I would call them and ask them to please watch what Eric is taping, because this is important, what we're gonna do right now.
And Matt, Matt, can you speak on this topic, or a different one?
Okay, sorry, I don't know, sorry about that. Yeah, now, just a quick question, how do we end up in heating this, or attempting to heat this room for this meeting versus the City Hall?
Typically, when we do a training, then typically it's not agenda, because, as you ever stated earlier, a training does not technically need to be agenda, we hold them separate away from the City Hall, so that we can be with staff, and staff and council, or whatever, we rule a lot of different city trainings in this room.
Okay, Patty?
Hi, Patricia Smith, I live at 101 Broad Street, Nevada City. And I'm just a little confused about this whole process, because it's been stated repeatedly that a council person can state their opinion as long as they indicate this is their personal that a council person can state their opinion as long as they indicate this is their personal opinion. Now, I've attended many meetings that Renette has been in charge of, and she always prefaces the comments, that these are my personal opinions. So I feel like a lot of brouhaha has been created over a false assumption that she does not do that. And I think that needs to be addressed.
Anybody else?
I know, I have, but I just want to say one thing, that I think that the council members should be transparent about, and this is addressing the training piece of this, that they be transparent about whether they prepared for the meeting or not, because I've seen meetings where one council member puts a lot of work and a lot of effort into making a presentation, hands out all the materials, and nobody reads it, and then crazy motions get put on the board because they weren't prepared for the meeting and just say off-the-wall things. So, I think it's really important to say, "I didn't read the materials," or "I did." And whenever there's a meeting, or, yes, there were two, you know, comments from the community, not 600. Okay, so anyway, I just want to say, your level of preparation is really important, because the public assumes that the council members are prepared, when in fact they are not. So I think it would be really cool if you let the people know that you prepared or you didn't prepare for the meeting, thanks.
Thank you. Alright, you're ready, not talking this topic?
No, no, it's just, it's just a comment that about the complaints, so much we hear about different levels of government, about, oh, well, there were complaints. I would recommend to the council in Nevada City to adopt a policy that any complaints upon which they are going to weigh a decision needs to be in writing and available to the public as well.
Yes.
And the last point I want to make is that I would like a copy of the materials that were given to me.
Okay, alright, do that. I'll make sure of that. Anybody else going once, going twice? Okay, so that they can have that motion to adjourn. Second?
Same here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Everyone, thank you so much for coming out, the practice office, we appreciate it, everyone.
Eric, how can I ask how you get this here? I am so glad that you're here.
Well, wait.
Thank you.
This is a, there's two problems.
Uh-oh.
No, wait, I just, my hearing is not so good, yeah, which I see in general in cases, but the second is, this room is, the acoustics are so bad.